Welcome this evening to Prior Lake Savage Area Schools School Board Study Session for Monday, April 26. And with that, I think I'm heading right over to Dr. Stallow.
Excellent. Good evening, Chair Ruel, board members, members of the viewing audience in the boardroom, and members of the listening audience at home. The purpose of study sessions is for board members and school district personnel to engage in shared understanding, to have an opportunity for conversation and discussion in order to ensure that efficient and effective decision-making happens at the board table. This evening, under the operation of oversight, actually, we'll be starting the evening with a review of my, the superintendent evaluation process, and do a little bit of an overview on our overall process, and then board members will be receiving materials. We'll then talk a little bit about the district budget, enrollment, long-range planning, and that we'll also get a recommendation from the finance facilities and long-range planning committee. And then, under the operations, oversight of operations, our strategic direction number five team will be sharing information about the work in which they've been engaged to deepen our standard reunification measures and to ensure that our safety protocols are in place. And then, we have a lot of board policies to review this evening as well.
All right. Okay, in line with that, just so board members, we have our working document, and Dr. Stallow just highlighted the areas that we're going to be working in on the document, but the superintendent evaluation, you see those dates and timelines right there. You should be receiving links tomorrow, so look for those in your emails. And then, she has the supporting documents, I think, right?
Yep, I do, and I've got just a brief presentation that I'd like to review with the board as well.
Yep.
Thank you, Martha, very much. My work and the district goals can only be accomplished through the amazing work of our team. So while tonight, and while this process really is about my evaluation, the evidence of the work that you're going to see is a collection of the entire administrative team, many staff members, and board members who have worked on this work throughout the year. So it's really important to know that as we have truly collective commitment to the "We Are PLSES Voices," and a lot of voices have been around this work in a year where two huge pieces of work don't even make it on our district goal and priority worksheet as we think about navigating the pandemic this year. And we also, last year, took construction off our priority work, which in hindsight, I'm not really sure why we did that. I think we had finished design phase and finished a lot of that. We finished the work around boundary changes and all of that, but we had a whole lot of construction that continued to happen in opening of new spaces and finishing some things. So as we look at the evidence that'll be before you in the packet, recognize that those two huge pieces of work didn't really even show up under our district goals this year. So with that, just a review of the timeline. Thanks, Martha. As Stacy said this evening, I'm just going to give a brief overview of our process, really, and then you'll have materials to look at, and you can see through the timeline with the next steps in your process as well. But the next slide really is the visual that helps depict the continuous improvement process of the district. And the green area is that area that has really the district oversight responsibilities, and that's where we have our strategic plan that guides everything that we do, our board three-year goals that you create each year and then focus in on specifics for the current year. It's where our district balance scorecard, the measures that are so important that we want to be sure to monitor and measure as a district. And then, our district priority work. And that really then moves into our green, that green area of this visual, which is the six strategic directions. And then, as you know, underneath each of those strategic directions become our priority work, our district goals. Where you get updates throughout the year, this evening, we'll be hearing updates on strategic direction five, the second part of our strategic direction five. The next part, that dark blue, is, just shows that the alignment of our school continuous improvement plans and our district continuous improvement plans all align to that priority work, and that's what our principals and our leaders work with their staff on every year as they design goals aligned to that, and then monitor and measure those along the way. And then, we have our learning teamwork, really, for our certified staff, for our teachers. That's really the work that they do in grade levels or departments to ensure that processes and data is being examined so that we can ensure the proper supports for each student. And then, ultimately, we want students to be monitoring and measuring their own learning as well. So that's just a reminder of kind of the overall process in which we've been engaged for the last several years. Obviously, the strategic plan is what guides all of our work. It's our promise to our community about who we are, how we're going to be, and what we're going to achieve as we seek both our mission and our vision for the district. The next document, then, is that three-year board document that we talked about, and again, we really focus in on the current year. And Chair Ruel talked about that a little bit, that tonight, what parts of that for each meeting are folks working on, but the three years give us continued scope into the future, and then certainly, you know, there are revisions along the way as different things like pandemics come up. The next slide, then, talks about the balance scorecard. And again, those measures, and I think it's really important to be reminded that that isn't just about academic standardized tests. We ensure that there's measures under each of the six strategic directions and continue to find the best ways to measure that. You know, as we brought in really social and emotional learning into our strategic plan a few years ago, we've had to learn about and increase our ability to measure some of those data points as well. The next slide is that the measurement of our priority work, our district goals. And if you recall, this year, what we did for the first time is we aligned each of those district goals, that priority work, to Reimagine Minnesota components. And that's, as we look at recommendations in the next month for next year's work, we'll continue to look at the Reimagine Minnesota work and see how we integrate that into our district priority work. Then see just a couple samples, both of our department continuous improvement plans and our school improvement plans, which again, is the work of our departments and our principals in our schools. And finally, this is the operational plan end-of-the-year report. You saw mid-year report, and now you'll have a packet that has a whole lot more information about the end-of-the-year report. There's a lot of links there that you won't have access to, but we wanted you to see the scope of the work and the accomplishments that happened in each of those areas. Again, throughout the year, we ensure that you have updates and presentations on each of those, in each of those areas. These are summary documents, so each section of the priority work, we also have teams that collaborate around the accomplishment of those goals. They start the year with charters that forecast what the work will be, and then we have a summary sheet just to land all of those accomplishments. And then, lastly, in addition to the district goals and the district priority work, the other thing that you will be measuring and you'll be evaluating me on are the job duties of my job description. So with that, in the rest of my work, you'll see some reflections on that that I'll provide to you, and then the links that you'll get tomorrow, we'll have an opportunity for you to review the duties of my job description in alliance with the evidence that you've seen, hopefully, throughout the year, not just through the written work that you'll see, but what you see evidence throughout the year. Any questions at all on the process? Or any other parts of it?
I'm just going to make one comment. So for board members, just to highlight, May 7th is your date deadline for those. So I know you'll get the links, I think, tomorrow, but you have till May 7th. So just encourage everyone to get those done, and there'll be two. So just look out for two, two links.
And I think tonight, just as you, as the presenter shared tonight, the work around, again, one area of the priority work and district goals, and you're going to see the scope of the work they've done, the collaboration that they've led, the accomplishments that have been made, and that's the work that folks rally around for each one of those. So I think it's a great example tonight, as Joel Marine and Joan and Jeff present for you to see how that works, and I know you see that, an example of that at most meetings.
Yeah, for sure.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay. District budget, enrollment, and long-range planning, enrollment updates, and legislative updates.
Dr. Stallow, tonight, I just want to give a little verbal update about what is happening. I'm sure you're hearing a little bit about it at the legislative sessions. I just had a quick little update with Masbo today as well. It really does sound like we're going to be going into some additional time. I don't believe that the session will end. Typically, what that means is, a lot of the small stuff that's currently out there really gets kind of put by the wayside, and they really look at what are those big things that impact. Right now, the governor has $745 million as the budget. The House is 721, and the Senate has 152. So, you know, there's a big spread there between the governor and the House is pretty close, and the Senate is significantly less. And so, a couple of things, I don't really, you know, right now, it's kind of all up for grabs. We're hoping, like, the House and the governor both have, the governor has 1% on year one, 2.5% on year two, on the basic formula. The Senate has nothing, and the House has 2 and 2, plus an inflation factor, and has a .5 on each of the next two years. So there's some, you know, some real increases there on the House side in the future years. There's...
Sorry, does the Senate have nothing on both years?
Nothing.
Both years, okay.
There's 0 and 0.
Oh, good.
I think there's a lot of information or misinformation that schools are getting a lot of money from the federal government. And for our district, it's, you know, we lost 278 students. And so, you, even if you round that very quickly by $10,000 per student, if you take into consideration all of the different categorical aids and special ed, all that, you know, it's almost $3 million. And our district isn't, hasn't received, we received GARE's funding, which is a significant amount of money, but very specific things, like tier-one childcare. It was for getting PPE. We needed that for technology. We needed those things to have, really have the distance learning in our district, and for our students to have a one-to-one technology solution. And so, a lot of those funds were spent and had to be, already be spent by December 30th of 2020. So if you just remember that, that that's where that money went. It wasn't something we could use for our current year budget. Our GARE's funding is very small because it's based on Title I. Title I is based on the number of students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. And so, for our district, we are seeing very little money come from those GARE and ESAR grants, federal grants. I think our district, and we just talked a little bit about ESAR II, was under $700,000. And ESAR III is a little right around $1.5 million. However, 20% of that has to go towards summer school, and so, there's very, there's restrictions on those funds, that we can't just use them to offset our deficit from the loss of students. And so, I just want you to be aware of that, and the public, whoever is listening, to be aware that even though, yes, we're receiving some funds, it's not enough to offset our student enrollment decline. And not receiving any funding from the state, if the Senate were to get their way, would really significantly hurt school districts in the future. Because this federal funding is not ongoing funding. It is one-time funds, and it has to be spent in certain ways. And so, I just want to remind the board and anybody that is listening that those are very specific dollars to be spent. So I think there's some thought that there's money that's coming from the feds that's helping districts, and especially for districts like Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, it is not enough to cover those deficits. And we also have local deficits, you know? We didn't receive any money or very little money from people attending sporting events and all of those different things that happen throughout the year. So that also has an effect on our budget that we've talked about in the past. And so, there's any questions on that? But I know that right now, they're going to be, there's five people that will be selected to work through those negotiations with the Senate. The House has their five people. The Senate, I believe, is going to be letting them know who that is today, or letting us know who that is today, and then they'll go into these negotiation sessions, and then we'll see what happens. We also know that the governor needs to bring, needs to bring them back to extend his executive orders, and so, most likely, that will happen at the same time that they will extend the session.
I have a question.
Yes.
At the beginning of the session, there was talk about kind of holding districts harmless with their counts. I haven't heard anything that doesn't, doesn't have legs with anybody. So nothing for...
I'm not hearing anything. There is a bill that doubles the declining enrollment revenue that you would get, which it's about a fourth of the revenue that you would get in aid only. So if you think about the $6,000 or $6,500 per pupil unit, you'd get about a fourth of that. And that bill would make it about a half, so you'd get $3,000, $3,200 per pupil. But I haven't heard where that bill is going, but it still doesn't cover the cost that we lose in referendum revenue. We lose in...
All the other...
Local optional revenue or categorical funding, all of those different areas.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have questions?
I would just make a comment. I want to thank you for calling that out, that I think it is easy even for some politicians to say, "Look at all the money that's gone to public education." And our deficits are not just because of students, but because of the extra expenses that COVID brought on, just to survive. And so, there is no way that that, any of that funding came in and suddenly made us a rich district. I think it's also important for us to note, for those listening too, that when students left public schools in the past year, a major part of that was because public schools are required to follow the state guidance for safety and COVID protocols. And so, I mean, we need to do that. And that drives students away. It wasn't that suddenly things were terrible in public schools or Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. It was simply a matter of, here are the rules we must follow, and they get to vote that way. I would also say to anyone listening, anybody can contact your legislators if you need to know who to contact specifically. I'm sure one of us at the school office could let you know to advocate for the funding that we need to not keep falling behind. The state simply is not keeping up with what we need. So thank you for making those points. I think those are important.
Well, we, even though we're declining this year in enrollment, we actually added teachers at our elementary, and we added monitors at our high school. So we added staff even though we lost. And the same with transportation. When we lose students, we typically would cut our transportation. We could not because of the requirements forced, six feet of spacing, social distancing, all of those reasons. And so, a lot of the things that we are, would normally look at to reduce or right-size, we just could not do that, simply because of all the requirements that we had from the state.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you called that out, Julie, because you're right. You know, remember, we were expected this summer to build plans for hybrid learning, for distance learning, for in-person learning. And in order for us to do Distance Learning Academy, we did have to hire teachers, and we had some funding to help us with that. But again, that's one-time funding, and, you know, the same thing with the classroom monitors. That was in order for us to be able to run hybrid learning and distance learning as well. So all of those expenses, again, were not a result of anything we did or any other public school did wrong. It was a result of the expectations that were placed on all of us and the funding that it took for that to happen.
So we are closely monitoring our enrollment, of course, and we're continuing to slightly decline even this time of year. And we're really watching next year's kindergarten. We're about 25 students behind where we were last year, so we're hoping that our students will start to look at coming back. We are contacting our parents and letting, you know, asking them if they're planning, you know, if they've left our district this year, if they're planning to return next year so we can make some plans and make sure that we have a sufficient amount of staffing so that, as we go through that process, we are, we are looking at all of those options for our enrollment.
And I know as a superintendent group and others, I'm sure Masbo is doing the exact same thing, we're also in communication with the commissioner, with MDE constantly, to say, some of these decisions have to be made. We need to know, and I know that no one knows what's going to happen, but we need to have some decisions made so that we're not scrambling for plans in the summer and so that families don't continue to get frustrated with some of the mandates and the requirements that we have, and then make different decisions. Because it's not just Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, it's public schools across the metro that are experiencing the declining enrollment, or parents just choosing other options who are able to do that. And again, no judgment on that, but it's very important to remember that we don't, we didn't set the rules around masks and around social distancing and around some of those things. While we wanted to do everything we could to keep our staff and students safe, we also had to play by different rules than some of our other schools did.
Any questions?
Looked like there's any other ones, so...
Well, we will continue to monitor...
Yep.
What's happening at the legislature this spring, and I would think you could expect that it will continue. It will not end on May 17th as planned. I will be surprised if it does, but we'll continue to monitor and update as it progresses.
All right.
Track record.
They do have a track record. That is correct.
Thanks, Julie.
I think next up is FLYRPS.
Yeah, if you want to talk about...
Yep, happy to. Yeah, we did have a finance facilities and long-range planning meeting a week ago, and I'll let, I'll start the conversation, but then certainly hand it over to board members to continue to work on this. The outcome that we had established at that meeting, I know the board directed us to continue to be reviewing our budget and options that we have. We've been looking at a technology levy as a long-term option over the course of the last year. You've seen multiple presentations, and we've had multiple conversations about that. So at our FLYR, our last FLYR meeting, the outcome really was for the committee to bring forward a recommendation to the rest of the board to direct me and my team to continue planning toward the possibility of a technology levy for next fall. So with that, I'll hand it to Jonathan and Julie if there's anything that you'd like to add about that recommendation that I believe you're, we're making right now.
So we went over lots of numbers again and revisited and revisited the impact, the tax impact at different amounts. That is actually, that picture has actually improved a little bit because of property values increasing. And we also, there was a pretty robust discussion, a little prematurely, about the process of what is presented and what's in it. I think what we were really trying to dial in at that committee meeting was yes or no, number one, and number two, to give you a range of what we think we would consider. My perspective on that is a request of our taxpayers to help us offset the growing cost of technology ought to look approximately like our technology expenditures, in my mind. And we were seeing, we've seen the past couple of years, that that between staff and devices and maintaining everything is in the $3 to $3.5 million range. And I think we settled on just telling you that three to four is a starting point for And I think it's important to recognize that it's, it's going to be a challenging ask. It's a challenging environment, and I think we want to get the community involved in the process as quickly as we can.
Well, Jonathan, I love that you just shared that because you're right, we had some of the conversation in the committee was premature. Part of what, what we want to be sure that we had information from the board and direction from the board to continue planning, because our next step in the planning process is to seek stakeholder input and to, to survey, do a community survey to our community, not all of our community, but members of our community, so that we can start getting more ideas around what is the tolerance for, the tax tolerance? What is the support? What are some of the things that resonate and that people will support and understand the importance of technology, especially in the year like we have? And also understand that we're not proposing that technology ever replace the magic that our teachers and staff do with kids every single day, but we have operational technology needs as well as classroom and teaching technology needs. So the input that we'll gather will continue to create the story. So really, we showed a very initial concepts around conversations that we've had for the last year. What's the purpose of a tech levy? Taking a look at our spending over the past several years, taking a look at our new normal, where we now are a K-12 one-to-one, and we were just in eight grades, eight-12 one-to-one prior to this year, and what that means now for the level of, of teaching support that we need and want with technology, what our curriculum looks like, what some of the other work and engagement practices that our teachers and staff can do. So we were presenting all of that and really just needed direction to say, should we continue to plan forward? And the first step of that is a community survey. As we look at the timeline, you know, we'd like to come back to you again, we're not ready for key messages. We're not ready for exactly everything or what that amount is. That's what we're seeking input from our community about. But on May 10th, we want to just bring back some additional information from the last time, I think the last time that Marcus presented was in November, December. So bring back some more information. And then, on May 24th, we'll come forward, Morris Leatherman, Peter Leatherman will come forward with the results of that Morris Leatherman survey, community survey. A portion of that is about the tech levy, but there's a lot of other perception data that we'll gather. On June 14th, then, what we would do is we would present, be building, continuing to build that proposal with input from the board, with input from the community, as we continue to look at, at our needs. So we'd bring forward a draft or beginning stages proposal on the tech levy. And then, on July 12th, again, we would revise that according to your inputs and anything else that we're hearing. And then, July 12th would be the timeline that we would come forward to the board, seeking action on a resolution to call the election for then, next November. Early voting puts us in a little different timeline and position than we have been in the past, so that July date really would be the point, that if the board so chose to move forward and approve that resolution, that's when that would take place. So that's just a summary of the timeline that we shared, and really, the recommendation of FLYRPS is to direct us to continue planning forward with that timeline in mind. Julie, I'm sorry, I kind of took over. Is there anything else that you wanted to add?
You summarized it excellent, so, yeah.
So with that, and here, yeah, unless there is opposition from the board, again, I know this is a study session, so we don't take a formal vote, but I'm seeing some shaking of heads.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I had a couple of questions, just in the sense of the survey. So we're just seeking, like, appetite. I mean, so I'm assuming, like, questions would be asked as, what would you be willing to spend per month, kind of thing?
Yep.
And there'll be, like, a range of some sort? Okay.
Yeah, very similar. You know, we've, we've worked with Peter Leatherman and Bill Morris for years, and, and especially around, as we, you know, we do, every other year, we do a perception survey, and then, when we're thinking of, you know, going out, especially in this case now with that's a possible technology levy, we'll test some of those questions, and, you know, he does that work across the state. But we'll test some questions to, again, see, you know, where our community is and how that drives both the price, I think, the amount that the board will ultimately land on if they so choose, as well as what, what is important to our community regarding technology. And, you know, we have data from past years that we've already reviewed and looked at, but we know we're in a very different time. but we know we're in a very different time than we were even two years ago with technology.
Right. Well, and I think too, I know the, the board members that have been on, not the two new ones, have a little bit more history in the sense of some of our conversation around that. So I just, as far as bringing them up to speed and making sure that, you know, we kind of go through some of that stuff. I know it's a little bit the cart before the horse, but having some of those discussions on costing and, you know, what our costs are each year and staffing. I know we had staffing levels and things like that. I don't think we've talked about that since January, right?
Might be November.
I think before that.
I think it was, all the previous.
The technology staffing?
Yeah, like those kind of pieces where, so I think we need to have those somewhat discussions again. So just as far as going forward, I know I'm getting the cart before the horse, but. No, I think it's, I think it's something definitely we've heard about it for years that we haven't had a tech levy. So, and it is a, an avenue for funding. And the fact that we, this last year, were basically pushed, you know, for no fault of anyone's, it's just we had to get devices. And, you know, I know there were issues on age of devices and things like that. So that definitely, I think, I think we knew it already. But I mean, it, it definitely was something that, you know, needs to be addressed. So I think it's good that we're, we're looking at solving for this, so. Yeah, I would definitely support moving forward with the Leatherman survey. Is everyone else on board as far as?
I'm in support of that as well. Probably more of a curious question. You mentioned that we would survey the community, but perhaps not the entire community. So I'm wondering if you can unpack that just a little bit more to help us understand which parts of the community we're.
Kristi, do you want to speak to this one? Morris Leatherman have done community surveys for years. So they have the, they, he will be able to answer much of the statistical questions that you might have Enrique, but I'll let Kristi answer some of that.
No, it's a good question. So this is a scientific survey. It's a random sample phone survey. So they will sample usually around 400 residents. And they make sure that they have a mix of different age groups and genders and Prior Lake and Savage and townships. And then he'll also go over on what that margin of error is. So they get, make sure they get a good cross-section. And it's a long survey, but they make sure that, you know, that doesn't impede someone from taking the survey. They'll call back and make an appointment for a better time if that person wants to take it. So they do a really nice job and they're very thorough.
And I think part of the survey that we'll, that we'll ask, we'll ask them to administer on our behalf is also a balloon, a portion of a balloon survey. So we also have a larger portion of our families. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yeah, they do a, you know, an overall community, but then they'll also do a little sample of parents. So then we can see just how, you know, parents' perceptions may differ from the larger community. So it just adds another layer of information for us.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
And one of the things when I was going through the timeline that I didn't share that I want to be sure that I, I share with board members is we also, after tonight now, with your approval for us to continue to plan, we'll make sure that we set a meet and confer meeting so that we're able to have a representation of, of staff members also, you know, hear the information, provide opportunities for input. If you recall, last spring, Marcus and Jeff and Chris Lynn did do surveys and focus groups with staff and students. So we have rich data about what people wanted and how they used technology at that point. But we'll continue to engage staff in this as well.
It would be interesting to see what, that was before the pandemic, wasn't it? Yeah, I wonder how much it would have changed or has changed. So, you know, that, that would be interesting. Okay. No other questions? Yeah.
We have our direction and you will hear back from us on May 10th.
Okay.
At the regular board meeting, we'll have a updated presentation again. Please don't expect us to, you know, have the proposal ready for you. If we had the proposal ready on May 10th, that would mean that we did not listen or seek input from our community to build the plan. So it's, it's the process right now of learning our needs and telling our story and listening to our community about what they need, what they believe we need and what they would be willing to support. Thank you.
Sounds good. And next up is strategic direction number five, providing a safe, secure and supportive environment that nurtures social emotional wellbeing of all learners. Mr. Holmberg and some other people.
Okay. Good evening. Chair Ruel, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. We're here tonight to give a presentation on our standard reunification work, which is one of our priority goals this year that you heard Dr. Stallow speaking, speak about earlier this evening. It's under the broader umbrella of our crisis management plan. And so I'm going to introduce my co-presenters. And I'll ask them to join me in a socially distant manner up here around us. Ms. Maureen Mullen, our Assistant Director of Operations, Transportation and Health and Safety. Mrs. Joan Heisey, our Administrative Assistant, and Mr. Joel McCall, Emergency Plans Coordinator. And this is the team that has been working on this, I think, starting several years ago, a couple of years ago before the pandemic, as a, as a broader outreach of our crisis management planning around standard reunification and really what that means. And as a district, how in the event that we need to reunify students with families in a very atypical way, beyond an early release, beyond a weather inclement event, how would we do that as a district? Knowing that, that, that process needs to be done appropriately, responsibly, and with the student at the center of that process. And so started, the reason why I say we started a couple of years ago is that we've had a pandemic going on as well. And so as part of this process, they've continued to navigate that and work through this process. And we're really excited to be able to present this update for you this evening. So the second slide, and we've also shared this as well too, is that everything we do is around our strategic plan and our mission. Specifically, we call out strategic direction five, providing a safe and secure supportive environment that nurtures the social and emotional wellbeing of all learners. But we, we took it a step deeper this evening and what we're going to share with you this evening. If you look at the core values, I want to point out partnership. Collaboration of resources and talents to achieve high mutual goals for the benefits of all. And I also want to point out two vision statements. Safe and respectful schools and a district of stakeholder partnerships. And what I'm really excited for this team to share with you this evening is, as we go through this presentation, you're going to see those things come to life in the things that we're doing, the actions that we're doing, the planning, the preparations, the pictures, all of those different things that really tightens this together around this very, very important work. So I mentioned strategic direction five. There, we have two goal priority areas under that strategic direction this year. One with the MTSS that we talked about earlier in the year. And then also too, the preparedness, response, recovery and plans for that reunification. And I think broadly, as a district, we've been working on crisis management for many years. As a board, you've had updates about our community crisis response and our tabletop exercise. We've had board reps serve in that capacity where we have our safety partners come together with building administrators. We do tabletop exercises and talk about plans associated with, how would we respond? You know, how would, what would communication look like? And I think we do that once a year, but I think we've, we've come to realize that that type of relationship needs really ongoing nurturing and ongoing connection for the work that we're doing. And so it's important that we continue to do that. We have teams at every building that are focused on medical emergencies and helping our students and staff should there be issues during the day where, again, medical emergencies before our community responders get there, we want to be able to provide appropriate care and comfort as we address those situations in very respectful and responsible ways. And then I think most recently, prior to our work on standard reunification as a board or as a district, we shared with you about our lockdown with options. For years, many schools were doing lockdowns. And since that, we, it's evolved. Best practice has been, has evolved around that where the options either run, hide, fight or other type where, where staff and students are making conscientious decisions about what's the best thing for them to do in a very safe way, under the direction of their teacher so that they can be safe during a type of event where they would have some, where they would have to make some decisions about how they would keep themselves safe in an event. And so we've had a, again, I think, you know, over the course of the last several years, we've always had these updates. And this next one we're going to be talking about this evening is really, really some deep, deep, complex work, requires a lot of fingerprints on this plan. And again, I'm, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Maureen to, to kick us off and, and keep us going as we go through this presentation.
As Jeff described, the standard reunification method is very specific to the last elements of strategic direction five B, which is response and recovery. So an incident can be over within minutes, but response and especially the recovery could take years. How we handle that response will, can have lasting effects and will really impact the healing process for our community. And we want to make sure we are as prepared for that as we can be. We began researching best practices and looking into how other school districts across the country are handling reunifications. And we found a protocol called the standard reunification method being used in over 30,000 school districts, departments, agencies, organizations and municipalities across the world. This reunification method was developed by a Colorado-based organization called the I Love You Guys Foundation. They have developed protocols and methods for emergency response, reunification and emergency district supplies. They offer a bi-yearly training called the Briefing Safe Schools Symposium, which seven district administrators attended in July of 2019. Out of that training, a crisis management subcommittee was formed and tasked with developing our district's reunification response protocol. And that subcommittee's first task to develop a mission statement around that work was acted on while we were still at that training.
Hold on, just one sec. There we go. Thank you. And then scroll with.
While in Colorado, the seven of us drafted a mission statement to help guide our impending work. Recovery starts when the event begins. Our mission is to ensure accountable reunification of students with parents or guardians during an unplanned event, to provide timely and accurate communications, including follow-up resources for students, families and staff members. We have our scheduled daily releases, early releases, and we have general plans in place for unexpected early releases such as inclement weather. But after this conference, we realized we needed to begin work on the unexpected end of a school day, that unplanned event. More specifically, an unplanned event where students would be dismissed from a location other than their usual day-to-day school building. A reunification may be activated for various reasons. Acts of violence, such as a 2005 Red Lake, Minnesota school shooting, natural disasters, or utility-type incidences such as a 2019 Minnehaha Academy gas explosion. I truly hope to stop local examples there. But unfortunately, if you watched the news this morning, there was a report of shots fired at the Robinsdale area middle schools. The press release came out this morning saying, we are aware of a serious incident at Plymouth Middle School this morning. All students are safe. However, the school remains in lockdown. We're still gathering information. For families who wish to pick up their Plymouth Middle School students this morning, please go to the East Park in Lot of Armstrong High School for reunification. Thank you. So to help organize and plan for the sizable amount of work ahead of us, Jeff requested I create a 30, 60, 90-day planning document. It has evolved into an ongoing resource or a 760-day document to date. This spreadsheet has been instrumental in helping us visually track which tasks have been started, which have been completed and which items are still in a to-do status. This is our vision and the goal of our ongoing work, to ensure we have set our district up to successfully reach our mission that every student would be reunited with their parents or guardians following an unplanned event and that we have recovery and support plans actively in place.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me time in front of the board tonight. Dr. Stallow, thanks for the invite. Appreciate it. My name is Joel McCall. I had a little bit of background in emergency management prior to coming on board with you folks under your direction two years ago. I'm here to, tonight, I want to take you back two years in time. The school district reached out to me and they said they would like to have some additional training with your strategic direction number five, primarily involving reunification. Coming from my background, I'm like, do you just want training? Is this going to be an hour? Is this going to be a class? Are you checking the box? So I gave them a homework assignment. I said, online, you can find some free incident command training through FEMA. Here's what I would like to request. I don't want, I just, you know, I don't want to come and spend a lot of time training just to check a box. So I requested that they send some of your key staff online to take incident command 100, 200, 700 through FEMA and then get back to me when they're done. And we'd be happy to sit down and meet with them. About two weeks later, they got back to me. Called and they said, we sent 49 people. Our top 49 staff members were required to take that training. Not only that, but they also had already signed up to send seven individuals out to Colorado for the I Love You Guys Foundation training. I looked at Dr. Stallow, Jim Delwo, Maureen Mullen, Mr. Holmberg at that time and I said, wow. You're serious. I love 719. Not only did you want the training, but you're taking it to heart. In that training, like I said, they took the three courses, they sent seven people out to Colorado, took that training. I've been here two years working behind the scenes on a part-time basis with your staff members. And I can tell you, they're very, very passionate about strategic direction number five. They're very passionate about reunification and getting every student and their child back to their loved ones in a timely manner. We talked about things such as logistics, operations and interior operations. They grasp that very easily. And then we had one little gap we had, and that's, that was this slide here. In this slide, on the bottom right-hand picture, are your public safety partners. Prior Lake Police and Fire, Savage Police and Fire, Scott County Emergency Management, Scott County Sheriff's Office, Alina Health is involved as their EMS provider. And as you're aware, over this past year, Scott County Public Health is also one of our key providers that assists us through situations such as this. But not only was it training for the school district, but it's also training for our first responders because they're trained tactically, not emotionally and psychologically. The question was, how do we marry these two? We're not 100% married yet, but over the course of the last two years, we have made great strides. We just had our annual training this past Wednesday. All of those entities were involved in that training. They didn't play a large role, but they got up and spoke a little bit about what this last year's meant to them. And I think there's a deeper appreciation between the school district and public safety today than there has been in a long time. And that's thanks to you folks with your support of your staff by continuing on with your additional training.
So here's, here's some of our continued work from July through December of 2019. We worked on the reunification goal kits. Materials are purchased and assembled. Internal site reunification maps are created. PLSAS staff roles on the SRM organizational chart were identified and assigned. 60-plus bus drivers were trained on the SRM role and what their role would be during a reunification. SRM presentations for 1,400 of our PLSAS. role would be during a reunification. SRM presentations for 1,400 of our PLSAS staff members were conducted. So, on the reunification go-kits, John Michael Keys is the founder of the I Love You Guys Foundation, and he's quoted as saying, "If you buy it, it gathers dust. If you build it, it gathers fingerprints." And that's exactly what happened in assembling these kits that you see behind you. The kit contents have been created to allow for someone with limited prior knowledge of the process to successfully understand, then perform their given tasks and duties, simply by opening and reading the contents of these binders. These kits were designed with proven methods for planning, practicing, and achieving a successful reunification in what are often chaotic, anxiety-filled scenarios. The org chart behind me was also provided by the I Love You Guys Foundation. We have attempted to fill every position at least two staff members deep. And whenever possible, this will allow for us to have a backup in case one of the people assigned isn't able to, available when called upon. We have filled these positions with staff who did not have day-to-day classroom duties, so it'd be available to respond in a timely manner. In September of 2019, we were able to conduct SRM trainings with 60 of our bus drivers and explain what their role would be in the reunification process. During the fall of 2019, a team of SRM trainers went building to building conducting these trainings for 1,400 district staff members. This is an example of some of the go-kits that we have assembled and are sitting at the ready.
From January to March of 2020, several key steps were taken. Joan and Joel conducted site walkthroughs with some of our emergency response partners from Prior Lake, Savage, and Lakeville. It was an opportunity for them to gain familiarity with our sites. Some had never been in our buildings before. It was also an opportunity for them to give us feedback on some of our building's security and safety measures that we had in place. Another important step in the standard reunification method or SRM implementation was communicating with our stakeholders, the new response protocols. The Communications Department created a video illustrating this new process that was shared with our staff, with parents and guardians, and with our, is now on our website. We continue to use this video as an onboarding tool and a training tool for our staff. We, as part of the response protocol, there are entities called rapid response teams. These are those groups of staff members without assigned classroom duties who can quickly get to the designated reunification site. We did trainings with those teams, the logistics team and the operations teams, hands-on training for those folks. Those teams practiced their roles by setting up the reunification site, by reviewing their tasks and responsibilities, and communicating with the radios as we would do in an actual reunification. I can show you a photo on here. That might be for Jeff to do. Setting up the site, going through the reunification materials, and walking through the spaces helped put these new procedures into the muscle memory for these rapid response team. It was also a valuable opportunity to go into depth with the process and to ask and answer questions.
So, that brings us from January 2021 to the present. On January 20th, the Shakopee, Minnewakka, and Sioux community extended the invitation for Chief McCall, Maureen, and me to tour their emergency management center. This was the day of the presidential inauguration, and due to this national event, they decided to run a drill in their operations center, and their center was actually activated at this time. It was impressive to see their state-of-the-art equipment and watch their experienced emergency management staff. Some of their staff were actually called upon to travel and assist FEMA during the category five Hurricane Katrina disaster. I mention this because they have generously offered to support PLSAS should that bad day happen here. They have resources that could possibly assist us. Next, our school social workers have an existing relationship with our local police chaplains. The Pearl Lake Savage Police Chaplains is a group of non-denominational and trained volunteers. We were invited to their March meeting, and Chief McCall, social worker Jenny Bauer, and I presented the reunification process. I mentioned this as another community resource that would partner with us for the recovery and healing process after a reunification. As an example of their service, this group was called upon for community support in the 2018 kidnapping of Jamie Kloss in Barron, Wisconsin. We are fortunate to have such experienced community partners who would be willing to offer us assistance. We continued to hold virtual planning meetings during COVID in anticipation of our students returning in person. As shown in this photo, on February 4th and 5th, the I Love You Guys Briefings Conference, that is usually held in Denver, Colorado, in person, was offered virtually due to the pandemic. This allowed us to have 50 district administrators, a school board member, and some of our social workers attend this workshop. We also had one school psychologist able to attend the training as well.
So, that leads us to our next steps. As you heard referenced this evening, last week, we had our community crisis response team tabletop exercise. Again, I think one of the very few meetings that we've had in person, but in a very large space, to be able to spread out and in very much the same way it was facilitated by Chief McCall, just going through different scenarios and getting people talking about, what would the first five minutes look like? And again, having those ongoing conversations and dialogues during those types of settings sets and it establishes and deepens relationships with our community partners if and when we should ever have to go through crisis management or site reunification. It's, it's these types of experiences that definitely are beneficial and need to continue moving forward. So, you've seen some of the things here from binders and 40-some-odd trainings and, and a bunch of people kind of going through different trainings and putting things in a box, and putting things on paper, and talking through different steps of, of what would happen when. And all of this is what we're doing is we're gearing up for a functional exercise, an SRM functional exercise on June 18th, where we're going to be doing a walkthrough. And again, part of our planning that, a lot of our planning that we've been doing, it's been, it's been just a tremendous amount of work and effort, particularly by the three individuals behind me. And there's a lot of fingerprints on this by a lot of other people as well. And as we continue to do these plans and have meetings, the best thing and the most appropriate thing we can do is actually see how it works and see how we do if we go through a functional exercise, practice those things, see how long things take to set up, see how intuitive it is for people who were trained maybe eight months ago, coming to that standard reunification site to be able to pull out that binder, that tag, that vest, and start to implement a rehearsed practice. And all with the idea of, we're doing this under, under the guise of continuous improvement. You know, looking at, how do we continue to prove our intent is about learning, our intent is about looking at all the things we've put in place and really test-driving to see what we've learned through this, and where are those future steps that we need to go as a district in order to continue to improve this process. And with that, I think we're all happy to, to engage in any conversation or discussion or questions that you might have this evening.
Any discussion questions, anyone? Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to thank everybody for the incredible breadth and depth of work that you've done the last few years. I've had the advantage to be a part of two opportunities, the I Love You Guys virtual experience and the tabletop exercises. And I would just like to reiterate, not only have you done so much work and done it in such depth, but the relationships with the community partners, getting to know who they are, what they look like, what they sound like, and that everybody's working for the same goal, to keep people safe and to be prepared, is pretty powerful. And I just, I want to be just one to say thank you. And we'll never know how much work it was, but we can have a sense of it. And I think it will make all the difference. Let's hope it never needs to be implemented, but if it does, that muscle memory will be there. So, thank you. And thank you, Joel, for joining the team.
Anyone else?
I'll just make a couple of comments, being the veteran here. You know, this is the kind of stuff that quite honestly keeps me up at night. I mean, and it's obviously, like Michael said, something that we never want to go through, but the frequency that some of these events happen, you know, makes us have the need for this. And, you know, over the years, as we've kind of talked about this, I can tell from you all and just talking to people that it's, they're very passionate about it. And it's, you know, kind of central to our core of who we are, that this is a priority. And you can tell that. And Joel, I, I know just from discussions with our administrators, how highly regarded you are with that and your experience and the value that you've really brought to us. So, thank you. We, we really appreciate the partnership. And I think, Jeff, as you led off, just the amount of partnership and the community building and the importance of, you know, keeping this central in all of our community partners' eyes is, you know, I wholeheartedly would support that, you know, on a more ongoing basis because I know how important this work is. And, you know, when you need it, you need it like in a minute. So, this honestly helps me sleep better at night. So, thank you. So, yeah, I really appreciate the work behind this. And I know it's enormous. Joan's, you know, been digging in on that spreadsheet since day one. So, as it grows, lines and lines. So, thank you. This is really, it was great. And I think it's, you know, for parents out there, this is something I really, I'm glad people spend a lot of time on. And it really shows that we're living our mission in our strategic direction. So, thank you.
I'm really glad you just mentioned that because if you all recall, when we did bring 100 members of our community together to review our strategic plan a few years ago, that's where that strategic plan or strategic direction number five came out, and that's what we're presenting on. And I think what's most important about that night and our community input and that strategic direction is it talks about the health and safety, the nurturing, the well-being of our students. And we look at that in two different ways. The health and safety piece, that you just heard remarkable work being done about, and the social emotional needs of our students. And when you heard about working with chaplains and working with others, we know that should that horrible day ever come, or other crises that we may encounter, it's the recovery piece. It's how are we taking care of people both that day and into the future that really has impact. And that's a lot of the learning that we've done over the last few years as well. So, as you said, it keeps you up, but it was important. Our community said that same thing. And the response of this, these four individuals and this team has, has been unlike anything I experienced. And y'all have heard the story, and some of you saw the little orange post-it that in July of 2016, when I started, I'd had been on the job for two weeks and looked at a lot of our systems. And there were two areas of work that I knew that we needed to move forward with, and this was one of them. And I, I cannot even believe where we are right now. Well, I can because I know the hours that you have put into it. And this is something, you know, we talk a lot about the importance of buy-in with our staff, with our administrators, with our, with our community. It doesn't take much to get buy-in when you're talking about the lives of our students and our ultimate responsibility to our community. So, I have so much gratitude for your work and your leadership. And you're making us better, and you're making us feel more comfortable around topics that are really uncomfortable and hard to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to step in for a minute. And I think the next agenda item that we're moving into is our board policy reviews. And we're starting with policy 501, weapons. Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening again. We have several policies coming forward here over the next several meetings. Some of the policies, as you look at them, you'll notice that there, there's been quite a, there would appear to be some updates, or there's a lot of highlighted things in red. Some of these are not necessarily all content changes, but rather reorganization and shifting to better put it into our policy from a flowing, from a flow standpoint. And so, you'll notice that in several of these this evening. And then, of course, there are some revisions. So, with several of these, we did, I did work with our legal counsel on going through this relative to MSBA, as well as looking at how these policies, what our current policy was that we, that the board approved three years ago, looking at MSBA, looking at state statute, and bringing those together to draft this first look at revisions. So, the first one, if I may, is policy 501 on weapons. You see some, there's updates there in that, on that first page, but largely you see some header revisions, and then some reference to statutes on the third page, and some other small, different revisions for this policy. So, I'm presenting this as part of getting, kicking this off over the course of the next several meetings as a board so that you can start to look at this, review this, and have further conversations either this evening or subsequent board meetings.
Are there any questions while this one is up right now? Okay, that one will be brought forward then next time for the official first reading, I believe.
Continuing on is policy 506.1 on bullying prohibition. You see a lot of shifts here from the school district is being referenced here instead of ISD 719, and that's bringing things in more closely alignment with several of our other policies that the board has taken action on. But largely, revisions are relatively minor. And what I would want to point out is, at the end, we had our, we, what's, we had our, or excuse me, our procedures and guidelines pulled out separately in another document. They've been inserted into the policy under section Roman numeral seven. And so, again, it's not anything different. Rather, it's just been aligned and organized into the policy, embedded into the policy. Same thing with, with the school district action. That would be Roman numeral eight in the policy as well. So, it just brings it all into alignment under those policy documents for 506.1.
And this, I don't know if I answered this, been reviewed by our legal?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any questions?
Oh, John. Jeff, I'll just ask kind of a basic question about this with, I mean, we know that this stuff happens. Do we have, with this policy, do, does, do administrators, do staff have the tools that they need to be able to combat this?
That's a great question. And it's one that we definitely pay attention to. After our legal, after I worked with our legal on this draft, I also worked with our representatives from our principal group to say, from the policy, let's look at this globally and look at our current process and procedures in place that we have within our schools. Certainly, we have process and procedures. We have staff who, who work with this on a daily basis. Staff are certainly on the lookout for this. Open lines of communication, encouraging students to come forward if this is an experience, whether it's in person, or whether it's on the bus, or even in situations where perhaps more so now than, you know, a dozen years ago, cyberbullying, you know, things that happen electronically. And so, though, as you ask about the tools, it's certainly something we continue to build our toolbox on, continue to find those open connections with kids, be more proactive with talking with students about what should they do, what does bullying look like, what should they do if they feel uncomfortable, or if something doesn't feel right, who should they talk to? And of course, we want them to talk to somebody. We want them to talk to an adult, whether it be their parents, or a teacher, or a dean, or a principal, or any teacher or staff so that we can get them the right help or in support that they need to work through it. So, that's a continued work and effort by our staff across the district.
And the policy is supporting that work?
Correct.
That's really what we're after here, right?
Anybody, any other questions or anything? No? Okay.
Policy 506.2, use of police resource liaison officers in building crisis response teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds. Our- Our student support services director and I worked together. You see some IEP components for the revisions on this. And then, we also worked with our legal on this as well in looking at, making sure that this provision was up to date. Certainly, looking at IEPs, you know, as you see those things there, there are due process, there are some rights that come with students that have special needs. We want to make sure that as we work with students and families in these situations that we're doing it respectfully, according to the law and according to what best supports their needs of their disability as well.
Okay, any questions on that one?
Aging prohibition. You see, again, some revisions. I would also say too, probably the biggest change was we took the procedures which were at the very end of our current policy and included them in section four of the policy. So, again, more alignment revision for this particular policy.
Okay. Anyone questions there? Lot of red on that page.
Don't be overwhelmed. It's all, it just shows the change.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And then with that, I'm going to, unless there are any questions on this one, I'll turn it over to Dr. Schutenger on the next several policies that are in your board packet.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, board members. Chair Well, Dr. Stallow. The first policy up for review is 601.1, review of curriculum content and alternative instruction. And we are actually not recommending any changes to this. We reviewed it and it is in line and the practices still hold well. There are a couple of attachments to this policy as well that we reviewed and they're also fine.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or anything on that? All right.
The next one up is 604, continuous improvement of programs. And you'll see some minor modifications to this one to align with the roles and responsibilities of Chris Lynn Goodman, our district, our director of assessment, evaluation and district improvement. You'll see some minor modifications on the first page, some additions to the list of programs to be evaluated, including Sage, Lowell de Lago and MinCaps, some newer programs there. And also a change to the, the span of the review cycle, changing it from five years to seven years to better align with our available resources, timelines and to better, allow us to get the programs implemented before we start reviewing them again.
Interesting. Yeah, I think it was seven when I first started on the board. I didn't even remember we switched it to five. Okay. Anyone have any questions on that? No? Okay.
And the last one for me tonight is 621.1, the weighted grading system. And while it's one of the shorter policies, we have spent the most time, effort and gathered the most input and feedback on this one as we consider changes. This one can potentially affect thousands of students at the high school. So, we really wanted to round the bases and make sure we really got a lot of input and feedback on this one. So, what you will see is a minor modification at the top to remove the word elective in that this can apply to courses, core courses, math, science, ELA. I'll also add that we had a review team, including Mark Paulson, Prior Lake High School system principal, John Bezek, our high school principal, Kelly Nagley, our, one of our guidance counselors of the high school. And we got input from teachers on the building instructional leadership team, from students through a survey through Schoology, from parents through district curriculum advisory committee. And Kelly also surveyed some higher ed institutions, both regionally and just locally, to kind of see how our policies aligned. One of the things that, that came out right away is that we wait all of our honors courses at Prior Lake High School. And we've been doing that for many years. And that's simply out of alignment with practices of metro high schools around us and really out of alignment with, with most high schools in the country. And so, one of the recommendations from the committee was to explore only waiting advanced placement classes and year-long concurrent enrollment classes. And that recommendation really was in line with some of the feedback we got from parents, students and higher ed institutions as well. And we would plan to phase in any changes so that we essentially hold students harmless to the registration guide that they begin their, their time at the high school with. So, if approved down the line, this policy would take into, would affect changes at the registration guide next year, essentially affecting the class of 2026 and beyond.
For the ninth graders, the incoming ninth graders?
Yep, incoming ninth, or actually ninth graders, incoming ninth graders next year, not ninth graders next year. Does that make sense?
Oh, incoming, yeah, okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And so, really, all you'll see is that, that change in the definition area of how weighted courses are designated. The previous policy or the, the current policy says that any course that's designated as weighted can be weighted, which leaves a lot of wiggle room and gray area for the high school administration. That was one of their challenges when they were working with teachers and departments on determining which courses should be weighted. And so, this change to the policy would bring it further in line to both metro area practices and more similar policies from other metro area high schools.
Okay. I feel like this could be like, I don't know, a hidden, I don't know. Like, I feel like this could be a bomb goes off later because like, you know, this, all of a sudden, we're, you know, changing something. But, okay, so give me a little history. So, most schools in the metro, high schools do not have weighted.
Well, there's a range. So, some schools, Roseville, Apovale, Egan, for example, has no weighted grades at all.
Okay.
And then, there are some, the furthest towards Prior Lake High School is really advanced placement and concurrent enrollment classes. There are some that only weight advanced placement or IB classes. You know, it's generally courses that have an outside or external legitimator or, you know, a test or assessment of some sort. So, either through higher ed or through the AP. There are, I didn't come across any schools in the metro that weighted honors classes.
Okay.
That's really the primary difference.
So, yeah, what's getting taken off? Is it honors classes?
Just honors.
And that's it for, as far as our, so the honors classes won't be weighted?
Exactly.
But everything else will stay the same?
Everything else will stay the same.
Okay. And what was the feedback from the students on this?
Students, you know, we asked them a series of questions about, you know, how did weighting, weighted grading affect your, how did it affect your desire to take some classes? And, you know, we asked students at the high school, students at MinCaps. And, you know, by and large, students said, it affected it a bit, but I would still take those classes anyway. And we also dug into why did you choose to take honors or AP classes? And it's because of a variety of reasons like they wanted the higher rigor, they wanted the extra challenge, they wanted the deeper learning, they wanted the external credit in the case of AP or concurrent enrollment. They wanted that. And so, for AP and current enrollment, that would, that would remain as well as the weighted grading. For honors, that motivator would, would change a bit, but likely still remain the same. We wouldn't expect a giant drop off in honors course enrollment due to this.
Okay, so, and then as far as how upper ed looks at this, is it a detriment sometimes or not necessarily? I mean...
So, what the higher ed institutions essentially said is that they have essentially a formula for every high school. They know which classes are at the, you know, they know the range of rigor for each class and they know, and they, what they do is they have a, you know, kind of a specific formula to every high school to evaluate which level of course the students chose to take. And that's a part of the formula they take into account when determining admissions. So, they say, did the student consistently, you know, choose a more rigorous pathway in math and English and science and what have you? And they take that into account. Generally, they take weighting out immediately. That's generally one of the practices they do. And they just evaluate because grades and grading differs quite a bit between high schools, that's just one of the things they do. So, they said this would make no difference.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, yeah.
And I, I know going through that process several times, the past couple of years, we heard over and over and over again in admissions talks that the most important thing that they look at is your transcript and did you challenge yourself? It's not what is the GPA? It was more about the coursework. Ignorance question here. Elaborate for me just so I have a better understanding what we mean when we say concurrent enrollment courses.
So, those are any of the courses that we have a stipulation agreement with through Normandale, PSE, or not PSEO, but college in the schools through the U, you know, any of those that have an external, you know, the, the syllabus and the materials have to be vetted by the external provider, whether it's Normandale or the U or any of those providers. Those would all be, continue to be weighted.
Okay.
What, feedback from staff of honors classes that teach honors?
This actually was initiated due to feedback from the English department. And it, because they were, had some concern about, you know, expanding weighted, there was some push from a couple of teachers or a request from a couple of teachers to add a specific 12th grade course to the list of weighted courses. And there was some dissent among the department about, I don't think this should be weighted because of some of the reasons I just mentioned. It doesn't have some of the outdoor or external, it doesn't have some of those external assessments. And so, that's when we really started looking at this policy, knew what was up for review, we took a really deeper dive into it and got some of that. So, you know, we, we talked and met with English, math, science and ELA as the department's affected by this and they were all in support.
Okay, cool. Anything else? Anybody? No?
Clarifying question. So, just following up on your statement about not next year's freshman, but next year's, next year's freshman?
Yeah.
So, basically, all the others would follow the current protocol until they progressed all the way through high school and then the previous policy would sunset for them or they would sunset with, or the policy would sunset when, when the graduation happens. And this new policy will already be instituted, right?
Exactly. So, if you imagine, you know, it would be eighth graders now, or no, sorry, eighth graders from next year, when they're going to apply for, or register for courses in ninth grade next spring, this policy would be in place for them. So, it would affect their decisions. And we'd have all kinds of education about, you know, how does, how does a, how's the GPA work? What factors affect it? You know, college admissions, all of those normal things that our counselors do would be a part of this as well.
So, that brings up a good point because we're going to approve this policy, you know, this year. There's nothing that says in here when it starts.
And that would be a part of the practices. We could certainly add that. We could certainly add that to underneath the policy. It does sort of make it a little less evergreen. It would be a part of the practices when we put it into place at the high school.
Because it's going to be so long before it's actually fully implemented, we'd already be in another three-year cycle for it to get to reviewed. I kind of feel like it should have some type of statement.
Yep, I could certainly add that.
Okay. I, I think, I don't know what you guys think. I think it's just more clear. Because if someone goes to look at it and says, well, it only, it doesn't say that you're doing honors course.
Yep.
And then you have them waited. Oh, you gotta wait three years.
You could remove it in three years then.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, in the normal review, then we'll come back and it'll be gone.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, I think that'd be more clear.
Okay, absolutely. I'll bring that back. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Student fundraising. Was that you?
Are there any questions?
Oh.
I think this is the, we've looked at these, this a couple of times, so...
Oh, yeah, we're into that.
Yep, we're in the second reading, which is really kind of the third reading. So, there are no first readings of policies, but the second readings, yeah, the first one is policy 511, student fundraising, which we've talked about a couple of times.
Yep, I think we're good there.
Questions on that at all?
516. Anything on that? That's a lot of legal guardian words. Any questions on that? All right. And then, 518. Just a little capitalization. I don't think there's anything there. Anybody? And then, 530. Anybody? Nope. Okay. So, those second reads, those will come forward for approval at the next board meeting. We're making our way through the 500s, I think, the five and six hundreds this year.
Amazing work.
Those are getting reviewed rather quickly, so good. Superintendent relations.
You know, I, I do just want to mention something at this point and, and I actually had noted it before Joan said something tonight, but one of the, one of the most important parts of the last year for me has been the collaboration and the collective responsibility that superintendents from across the metro and the Casa State have done to support one another through the pandemic and through, you know, other, other crises. So, just tonight, as, as we do hear about the crises, both in, in Robinsdale School District as well as Marshall School District, on behalf of our district, I just know that folks will send some positive energy their way. There are really traumatic things for communities and school districts to experience. And I definitely feel that the state has gotten much smaller in the last year and people, people are doing everything they can to support each other. So, I just want to share that. Thank you.
Any informational items?
I believe so.
All right. Public forum, we did have two letters brought in or sent in. And so, I can have Michael read them. There is a three-minute time limit on, on these, just as our standard policy. Because some are lengthy, so I'm not exactly sure how long we will get into the letter, but I just want people to know that. So, if I say time, that's why. So, yeah, so with that, Michael, go ahead and...
Are you watching, Ken?
Yeah, I have.
Oh, you got it. Okay, thanks. The first letter this evening is from William D. Markert, 7690 Crestview Drive in Prior Lake, Minnesota, submitted to be read at the April 26 study session. As I mentioned two weeks ago, social justice and activist agendas and indoctrinating children in political ideologies should not be the role of any school board or education staff. The school board should listen to all taxpayers, not just a subset of them. At the April 12, 2021 school board meeting open forum, I asked the board to address questions and provide information as a result of its commitment to equity and inclusion resolution. In the board's April 19 email response to me, the board made the decision to narrowly respond to my questions as it relates solely to the actions and costs directly associated with the drafting of the resolution. The board's answer was that no actions have been taken nor any costs have been incurred by the board related to the resolution itself. The board did not understand that I was asking for information related to the school district's actions, already taken or planned to be taken, associated with all social justice related initiatives and topics, including, but not limited to, equity, inclusion, diversity, social justice, critical race theory, anti-racism, white fragility, systemic racism, white oppression, white privilege, implicit bias and any other social justice topic or term being used by the district. So, tonight I will re-ask my questions, but this time I have removed any reference to the commitment to equity and inclusion resolution. So, the board's response won't be so narrowly focused on the resolution itself, but rather on district actions, plans, budgets and costs related to equity, inclusion, diversity, social justice, critical race theory, anti-racism, white fragility, systemic racism, white oppression, white privilege, implicit bias and any other social justice topic or term being used by the district. The taxpayers deserve clear answers to valid questions since the district is accountable to all taxpayers, not just a subset of them. Taxpayers want to know if the district is indoctrinating its children and how much taxpayer money is being spent on this indoctrination, if any, while at the same time reducing teacher positions due to budget deficits. My revised requests slash questions are as follows. A, please post to the school board's website all materials used for professional development. The district has already or will be asking all board members, educators, administration and staff to attend related to equity, inclusion, diversity, social justice?
That's time.
Okay, thank you. The second letter tonight is from Teresa Higginbotham from Savage. Dear PLSAS board members, I'm writing to you regarding school policy that is being updated out of the typical rotation. This is regarding policy 516, medications in schools, which the board voted on. This is regarding policy 516, medications in schools, which the board voted on June 30, 2020. It was only added to the board packet last minute after I reached out to Superintendent Stallow the week prior, asking for the district's policy, procedure, protocols regarding sunscreen due to a situation that occurred this year, and she stated on April 5, 2021, the sunscreen was included in policy 516. I ask the board why there is a difference in what we are being told, and if it is in policy 516 already, why is it being added out of turn? In the current policy 516, how are sections E and G different in the way of parent approval? Also, what do parents and schools agree upon meaning in this policy? So if it is not an inhaler, it does not have to be agreed upon? In part eight, the policy talks, takes about health plans and 504s, allowing to document the needs, the need, not IEPs, auto-inject seizure medications. I know several years ago, the state statutes removed the words "section 504" as being a place it can be added to on their laws. Current 121A.22 statute reads subdivision five, children with a disability. For drugs or medicine used by children with a disability, the administration may be as provided in the individualized education program. Section 504 is not an individualized education program. How are parents approving medication placed in section 504 under policy 516? This year, we asked if there was a policy procedure or protocol which states there needs to be a parent and school agreement on medication use and dispensed. I was told there was none. However, does this policy state there is a statement of needing agreement? Additionally, how does this impact the form parents and doctors need to sign before giving medication at school? First, a little back history. My child is one of the few Mr. Holmberg mentioned when it was first introduced in, in the way of sunscreen. As he needs it, medical per doctor orders, which are provided yearly to the school due to an allergy to the UV. This school year, the district made changes that led his doctor to ask us for the policy procedure and/or protocol related to the situation. We were originally told by an administrator, when the change occurred, it was, it is excluded in policy 516 as it is an OTC medication, as it only includes non-prescription medication at the high school level. However, another administrator via an email to the school stated they were switching gears with the parents and allowed the parent policy 516 cover sunscreen at the same time the school reverted to parents allowed to identify the strengths of sunscreen.
That's time, that's time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and with that, I think we're at the end. Oh, one thing I do want to note, just for listening public, exciting news. We do have a retirement party, which I think's great. I know last year, we weren't, I don't think, able to do it. And so we do actually have, on Thursday, May 13, 2021, we will have the district retirement. It's aloha retirement. It looks real nice, like we could be in Hawaii. And it's at the New Activities Center, park in the upper-level staff parking lot. It's from 3:30 to 5:00, and it celebrates the retirement of our great staff that we talked about last time. So they'll all be there. And so I always try to get there. I think I'm going to be out of town this year, but yes, I would encourage anyone to come and celebrate those, the people that gave us many great years. So with that, I think I'll adjourn for the evening. 7:35.